And we will get started. I will call the meeting to order at seven oh four. And present, we have Joel.
And Mike the link hanging. I just got a text from Mike. I need to get him to like.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes.
So present, we have Joel neck, Jim Irish, Mary Wallach, Al Silwitz, Dave Lowery, Missy Cowell, and our guest, Dr. Douglas Shook, Superintendent of RST thirteen. And our agenda is pretty straightforward this evening. Let me share it. And tell me if everyone can see it.
Yes.
So it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. We don't really have any public comment because no people other than the Secretary of State from the general public.
Or the vice ponte.
Joining us this evening. So I thought though that we would have, would start by having Dr. Shook talk a little bit about himself, introduce him to us and after just sort of going around the table and saying names. And then we'll come back and have each of the Board of Finance members, Doug, talk a little bit about, introduce themselves and perhaps talk about some of the things that they've seen with regard to the school district over the, their, were their tenure with the Board of Ed and also their tenure in town, which is a considerable amount. We're fortunate to have quite a bit of involvement by our board. So with that, Doug, if you would like to, well, okay, so you can see the names on the screen, I guess. If you would like to, to go ahead and give us a little bit of background and so on, please, please do.
Yeah, thank you for the invitation. My name is Doug Shook. I prefer my first name Doug, if you're comfortable with that. Titles can sometimes get in the way of good relationships and wouldn't want that to be a barrier to any of that. I have a disclaimer to give before I start. I'm coming to you from what is our temporary home at the Homewood Suites in Wallingford, where I've lived for a little over a month. As we continue to search for house, so you may hear my wife talking in the background a little bit. She's also working in the other part of the room as far away from me as possible or our dog, but, but hopefully we can do this without distraction. I did start officially on January the fourth, and I am very excited to be serving as superintendent in Regional School District thirteen in Middlefield in Durham. I'm excited to serve in the schools and also serve the two towns and the community. And, and I will say that I'm excited to be here because I actually applied for this job, I want to say in August. And the process took quite a while and I was actually appointed towards the end of October. And then of course, had to give about 90 days notice to my previous employer to, to get up here. I won't go through my whole resume with you because you're probably not that interested, but what I will say as a highlight is I'm in my 31st year of public service, my entire career, professional career since I graduated from college in 1990 has been in public service. In my first four years as a naval officer, worked in oceanography and meteorology and got to do some really neat things that we could talk about all night, but I won't, won't do that in the interest of time, but it was a great place for me to start. And then the previous 26 plus years have been in public education and up until January, we're all in the state of Virginia, where I've lived the majority of my adult life, didn't grow up there, but you know, kind of my adopted home for the past 28 years or so. And, and so in public education, I had a number of teaching and administrative roles in three different school districts in Virginia, Fairfax County, Stafford County, and Bedford County. Everything is pretty much county systems in, in Virginia. But the last eleven and a half years prior to coming here to Connecticut, I was a superintendent in Bedford County Public Schools, which is a district of, in the time that I was there between about 9,000 and 10,000 young people. And the county spanned 760 square miles. So it is a bit of an adjustment coming here, but, but you know, it wasn't like I didn't know that when I applied or when I interviewed and that we didn't talk about that during, during the process. And so different sized districts, different state, different communities. During a pandemic, at the front end of budget season and dealing with some weather that people tell me is somewhat of an anomaly over the past few years, but I don't believe any of them because I just think they're trying to make me feel good about living this far north. I did spend most of my years growing up in Western Pennsylvania. And so this weather is not foreign to me, although it's been a while. And, and I went to some really cold places like Thule Greenland quite a bit when I was in the Navy. And, and so I've, I've been to the extremes and I've, I've had a really good career. I've been very blessed. I mentioned Denise before, I'll just tell you briefly Denise and I have been married just over 26 years. Celebrated our anniversary in, in December. We, we have a dog that's with us here. We have two daughters, adult daughters, 19 and 22. They're both full-time college students in Virginia. Our oldest is scheduled to graduate in May. And so we're very excited about, about that. Been happy to support her through college, but we are ready for her to move on and get a job. Kind of be off our financial roles, so to speak, and to move into adulthood and only have one child whose college we're affording. I mentioned the whole home thing. It's not for lack of looking or for lack of a great Realtor. We, we have a great situation. It's just, if you all aren't familiar with the real estate markets here in this part of the state, and really perhaps most of the, of the country, because it was the same way in Virginia. It's very much a seller's market. There are very low inventories. So our, our goal really is to live in district, to live in Middlefield or to live in Durham, or if not, the shortest possible commute in a home that is acceptable to Denise who agreed to move this far away. The third or fourth time, I believe she's agreed to move with me for, for a job and, and doing that lovingly and willingly. And I think the extra bonus for Denise is that she grew up on Long Island and still has quite a bit of extended family that, that live there. And, and so I need to say this as tactfully as I can. I know you're recording. This is the perfect distance she'd like to be. Close enough that she can visit for a day here and there, or we can get to a wedding or a family event that, that we've probably missed in years past, but not so close that maybe people are dropping in all the time where that she feels pressured to, to do that. So we're both excited to be here and, and I have, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to Ed. It was one of the first people I connected with back in November, I believe it was Ed. And, and then again in December, and we've continued to stay connected. Since I have arrived through regular meetings, he actually last week took me the town hall and to the community center, introduced me around and then drove me, you know, that the time that permitted in our schedules, which wasn't a lot through the town and just kind of showed me a lot of the, of the town. And, and so I feel like that's an important connection point and will continue to be for, for both of us. As I understand how things operate here. So I, I guess I'll stop there and see if you all have any questions or if you just want to go to your introductions and whatever else is planned for tonight.
Jim, I'm you.
You would think by now that I'd have this zoom figured out. So thank you very much for that. And, and you've given us a snapshot right into the center of your personality. Thanks very much for that, Doug. And I will use the, I will use the first name if that's okay. Are, I know that you spoke with Ed and in fact, and Alan had a tour of the community town hall and communities the other day. Just a couple of words and then we'll go around, around the circle of, of Hollywood squares and, and have everyone talk. The, and again, I don't know what your discussions with Ed or have been. A little bit about Middlefield and our Board of Finance, where we're really a group that is, is focused on maintaining and improving the quality of life in Middlefield. I mean, that's really what our Board of Finance is about. And everybody here pretty much, even though we have different backgrounds politically and designated and to the red and the blue, but still everyone pretty much works in a non, non partisan basis with the interest of the community in mind. And it's a very refreshing group and a very productive group because of those things, I believe. Middlefield itself is a town. And again, if I'm repeating some of Ed's background, I apologize. We're about 4,400 in terms of population, which is about 60% the size of Durham. So we're a little smaller. Have 1,700 households and offer about a third of the students to District RC thirteen. Our age distribution is about the same as, as Durham, although both communities are actually getting a little older. With, as the years go along, the average age and, and the graph versus age continues to shift upward in our communities. From a wealth or income point of view, our mean household income in Middlefield is about 77% that of Durham. So again, our, our income is a little bit lower than Durham. Another way of looking at that, home sales in the town, home sales above $300,000 in a recent year, about a third of our home sales were in that area. Durham had about two thirds in the above $300,000. So that's another way of looking at that income or wealth kind of thing. And just a little bit on numbers for you, the, our, our, the result of our Board of Finance work is our mil rate each budget year. And our mil rate is currently at 32 and a quarter, 32.23. We've done our best to sort of keep it constant over the last seven years. It's varied from a low. Well, we're nearly at the low. The low was 32.15. And our high was 34.96, but that was in a reval year. So that really, every reval skews it as you, as you probably know. We're fortunate to have a high tax collection rate above 99%. And that's mostly due to our tax collector's diligence. She's very good. We like to think though, that the taxpayers have some confidence in the budget that we set for them and show it with some of that as well. And our current budget. Well, we're going to enter the process a little bit later than you have. Our, our budget process has kicked off with a lot of input to the process and, and our first selectmen will offer a budget, his proposal at the beginning of March for our town. Our referendum will be one day after the RST thirteen referendum. So it culminates nearly the same point. Last couple of numbers, the school district represents 72% out of every tax dollar to Middlefield. So it's a, the school budget is in fact a big deal to us. We do look and, and offer some consideration as the budget process is going on because it's near, nearly 75% of our tax base. It's, and, and just to, to put currency to that, the 3.66% increase that was proposed last night by you and Kim would represent about three, or I'm sorry, would represent just about one mil. If you don't consider the shift in enrollment, Kim's numbers had our, our percent or influence lower, but that's because this year we've got a shift in enrollment where we went down in the percentage of students that we have. But it's very, that's a very, very sensitive number. I think she said, are, we were like a half a percent difference year to year last night. And that's nearly $200,000. So it does make quite a difference. But anyway, we're talking about point six mils to one mil influence already that the prospective budget that, that you and she presented would have to us. So that's a bunch of numbers, a little bit of the flavor of Middlefield. And I don't know if you have any immediate reaction or you may have already heard all of that from, from Ed.
Well, no, I appreciate that. And I'm kind of like a sponge soaking everything up, or maybe the better analogy is sipping from a fire hose. And, and so I need to hear things repeatedly, but yes, Ed did go over quite a bit of that information and some of it I also researched even as early as applying for the job, but it, the way you framed it was very good. And I've taken a few notes here and so I appreciate that.
I thought just to get an idea of the personalities of the members of our group, we could go around the horn and let me, let me ask Mary if she would start. We'll do ladies first tonight.
Hi Doug, how you doing?
Um, thank you.
I get to start off with the questions. Is that it? All right.
And explain, you know, give a little.
Who I am and what I am. Okay. Um, all right. Let's see. I, for a profession, I'm a recreation therapist by trade. I work for the state of Connecticut. And so I work in, in Connecticut Valley Hospital in the Addiction Services Division. So I, some of my expertise has to do with, I would say, social issues. I also have a background of two parents that were teachers. So, and I've had two children who have gone through, you know, parts of, of the District thirteen education. So I have some, some expertise in education. Vicariously, I guess, to say, as well as through the student, through the two children I have. They also have, they both have had learning issues. So I'm also familiar with, 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 you know, special education and stuff like that. So I'm trying to think, I've been in Middlefield for a long time now, since 1986, but I will tell you that even though I've lived here a long time, there is quite a history of people who have lived here. And so therefore I'm still a newcomer. Because you have people that have been here since the beginning. And, and so, you know, but my husband is not a newcomer. He was born and raised here too. So that's kind of like a brief overview of me at this point. So.
Thank you.
I, I, you're welcome. I have, I have two things I want to talk about, but I'm not sure if we're going to go around first. And then we're going to do the questions or not. Jim, do you want me to do it all and get done, or we're going to introduce ourselves?
No, why don't you go ahead and go through your, your questions or thoughts as well? And then we'll just go around.
Okay. Well, you know, when you start off first, you want to do it right, right? So anyways, one question I have and I'm not necessarily expecting an answer. It's just, I wasn't sure if, if it's on the radar or not. And how it may or may not impact the budget. I do know that from online learning, you know, from all the information, you know, I've heard on the news or from people who have kids and et cetera. That there is a concern about some delay because of the online learning instead of, you know, a total in-person learning. And I also know that there's issues or concerns about mental health as well. And I don't know if, if we've been seeing that or not. And if we are, is that a potential issue with the budget? You know, not just like this one coming up, but you know, if people are, are going to need to catch up, then you know, it might impact, you know, this year, next year, you know.
Well, Mary, those are two really good questions. And, and what I can tell you since I've worked in two districts now during the pandemic is I believe what you termed a delay, you're talking about maybe learning loss and the fact that, that kids have lost a lot. And, and I think it's fair to say, not just where I came from, but here, that really goes back to the spring of 2020, so even last school year. And, and so I don't have any data that I'm aware of that, that actually captures where we may be specifically in, in the district. But I think to your second question arises the larger concern for me, and that is social isolation. And if you work with addictions and things like that, you, you know, the mental health piece of it. Having said all that, I don't believe that the budget that we proposed last night really took those issues on in a serious way because it's, it's, it's actually a budget on the gross side that is about a percent lower than it, than it was the previous year. And, and so I, I think it's fair to say we're still figuring out what we need to do in that space, both of those spaces. And we may have some federal money to assist with that, federal money that as I understand it cannot be used to kind of supplant, it can only be in addition to, and, and so a little bit too early in the game to say these SRT two funds, how we may choose to spend those. But there's also this, and I know this is a mixed crowd, so I'll just say this as politically neutral as I can. There's this proposed $1.9 trillion stimulus thing going on from, from the Biden administration. And my understanding is that's going to have significant money for, for school districts. But I say that cautiously because the way these funding formulas work, not as much as you would think would trickle down to, to our district because of the way that Connecticut has chosen to distribute those, those funds. That's not a judgment saying the state doing that, but, but they're basically tying it to poverty data and, and Title One statistics. And because our communities are pretty well off here relatively speaking, we don't, we don't, we're not counting on getting a whole lot of that. And we haven't gotten a whole lot in, in the past. My previous district in Virginia received quite a bit more proportionally, just because we had a much higher poverty rate. And, and so so yeah, no, no real answers for you, but, but I appreciate you bringing it up because those items are both on our radar. And I guess I would also state that there's been a deliberate effort as we've brought children back in person or even remotely to focus on their mental health. And so that's being done currently, how successfully we are at that, I think is still to be determined. But I, I think one of the things I've picked up on and was pleased to learn is that the district here, although it is focused on academics as it should be, seems to be as equally, if not more focused on, on mental health and, and wellbeing. So yeah, maybe more of an answer than you wanted, but you asked, so I answered.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. The other subject that I was gonna kind of give you some information and also, um, you know, and it reflects on our budget is for the town of Middlefield, there's a number of people that, and I'm sure you've probably heard this already. There is a number of people that do not want to close John Lyman's school. Now historically, last, last year, they had a vote on that in regards to two things with the Board of Education, giving them more authority to close schools and also looking to close basically John Lyman. And it did not pass, not only in Middlefield, it didn't pass in Durham. Now, as we've talked on, on the board in the past about that, and also being a parent that had children go through John Lyman. Some of what we thought was also part of the problem because obviously, you know, financially, it's, it's, it's like on that side. Um, you know, it, it kind of looks like, why would you keep it open? Okay. Based upon things, you know, the numbers tell you, you know, in general that it should close. You know, if you're looking just at the numbers, but the residents of the, of, of Middlefield were concerned about not only having one school because of course you have two, two towns and feeling like number one, that we're getting the short end of the stick. You know, we're kind of getting taken over. And then some people are concerned that it would go all the way to like, everything would be in Durham, you know. So with the idea that not having a school, their concerns were to that it would you know, lower property, you know, value, et cetera. I mean, I don't want to go into everything deeply, but that's on one hand. The other thing that came up was just because the fact that we used to have two curriculums. And you know, John Lyman was a hot school and things were done differently there, you know, as far as, as far as how curriculum went. So I, my understanding is now that the curriculum is kind of melded and we have one curriculum. So I, and I also assume that at some point this is going to come up as a vote or, you know, because you gotta, what is it? You're looking at, at dividing up where everyone's going to be without having to put in, you know, money to, to make. I wouldn't say repairs at this point. I'm sorry. I'm kind of tired. It's, you know, capital improvements. Okay, there it is. So. And you were looking to not do that, which is, you know, quite frankly, personally, I think that's a good idea. But what I'm saying is, is when it does go out and the information goes out, I think marketing for it needs to be a little better. And I think in my, you know, because there was again, like I said, a lot of concerns in Middlefield, but it wasn't just Middlefield because Durham also voted it down too. So it might go easier, it might not, because curriculum is different. But I just want to let you know that if no one else has kind of told you about that. Okay.
It may not surprise you and appreciate that, that I, I think I was briefing the board last night telling them about my transition work. I think I've met with over a hundred people now, not even including tonight and really asking them about strengths and challenges and future direction of the district and it. the district. And it may not surprise you to know that the issue you just raised has come up in every single conversation unsolicited by me.
Okay, well.
I would say to you,
I'm glad I'm not the heavy hitter with the two issues.
No, I have come, I have come to view that issue as basically a stumbling block to, to moving forward. Because it feels like until that issue is addressed in some way, shape or form, it just kind of hangs over everything. Not the least of which, back to budgets and mill rates and, and all of those things that, that Jim talked about earlier. And, and, and yes, so I've, I've, I've heard that, that history. I, I think probably what has concerned me the most and, and should concern you too, I think, is one of the groups I've talked to recently during my transition that I pressed to speak to was about half a dozen Realtors that, that work in this area. And again, unsolicited, they came up with that issue, but with a slightly different lens. They talked about the uncertainty over that, not, not advocating for one decision or another, but the uncertainty of that was playing a role in families' decisions to buy homes in, in, in districts. So without taking sides or taking a formal position, which how could I do that in my first month here? I, I kind of feel like it needs to be resolved. And, and I know Bob is a selectman, so he's probably shared some of this with you, but I, I think the new wrinkle this may take on and will take on that maybe it hasn't in years past is that as this situation kind of lives in limbo, some necessary maintenance to John Lyman has been kind of indefinitely deferred. And I believe what you're going to see, I don't want to speak for the Board of Education, but I believe the direction this is going is a very clear picture of what it would cost to make those investments into Lyman. And basically to ask our community, let's either keep this school open for a long time, if that's what we're going to do and invest in it, or let's go in the different direction, which was kind of the trajectory before the things you described happen. And, and, and again, I hear loud and clear that for a lot of people, the dollars won't matter. From where I sit and the numbers that I've seen, they should matter to anyone that pays taxes. And, and so whether that group will ultimately prevail in a referendum or however this thing gets resolved, far, far be it for me. But also I think your point about publicizing, marketing, a, a, again, my lens on that would be maybe not like in a heavy advocacy, we have to do this or we have to do that. But at least to lay out for people exactly what's at stake here and, and why they should engage in the process, become educated, and then make an educated decision. Because keeping that school open long term will, um, will do some very interesting math to the, the mill rates that Jim, that Jim talked about. I just don't see any other way to get from here to, to there. So yeah, thank you for that. And maybe that spares everyone else from having to bring that up awkwardly. Ed and I have talked about that on a number of occasions as well. And, and I think, um, I think we need to be very clear in our communication on that. And, and I, again, timing on that could be as early as this late spring. In, in terms of a referendum, again, I don't want to speak for the board, wouldn't want to do that. But I think the, the, the trajectory that they've asked us as staff to look into, I think it's fair to say, would, would be a scenario that either close the school, not this summer, but the following summer, to give us the longest possible runway. But also to not put off repairs and up, updates that need to be done to Lyman. And so we don't have to operate that as a school more than this spring and then the following school year. And, and sadly, I would have to tell you, I, I did have the experience of closing two community schools as superintendent in my last district, probably about eight years ago. And quite frankly, was surprised that I survived that because of the way it tore our community apart. So I have very, I have great empathy for a community that identifies with a school and, and feels like there's a loss, an emotional loss with, with that. And, and so I just think we all have to be sensitive to that and recognize that even if the decision is to close it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an emotional issue. Like myself personally, like I was trying to say, I, I see both sides. You know what I mean? And so it's, you know, i- i- it's hard, you know? I mean, from, you know, when I'm wearing my finance hat, I'm like, well, okay. But then when somebody comes and talks to me about the other stuff, I'm like, all right, yeah, I see that side too. But I, I think, you know, my only thing I could say is, is to try to, you know, and it sounds like you've been through it, so you know, I mean, that's how it can be. That, you know, it's not always just about hitting the numbers, it's also hitting the emotional points. And also, you know, myself personally, you know, obviously I'm not, you know, in charge of it, but I, I, I think that people need to understand not only the money side, but how that affects, affects the emotional things they're concerned about. I think you have to start with, I'm for this, and you know, this is the stuff that you're looking for, and this is how that's going to be impacted if we go this route. You know?
Yeah. So, so good points. And, and I, I won't belabor this too much longer, but based on what you just said, I think it's important to hear two things that are kind of core to me, that kind of guide me. I, one of the mantras I live by is that I like to make all decisions based on the impact to our learners. And, and as it pertains to school closure, there are, there are two sides to that. But, but I guess what, what I can tell you by experience is the children themselves, in my experience, doing this have zero problems making the adjustment.
It's the parents.
That's right. Just like some families pick up and move their kids to another state or another community because of a job relocation or whatever. And they know that's hard on their kids, they do it and their kids adjust. And, and, and the same is true here. But I think the bigger picture is it's not about the money, but it is about the money in the sense that if budgets are tight and if people don't have unlimited resources to pay taxes and support, what this ultimately comes down to is redirecting precious resources. And, and from my perspective, being a good steward of the dollars that were given and saying, I would rather put my money into teachers and programs for children than into buildings. And, and also slightly related to that, you do gain some efficiencies. And, and, and again, I, I think this is why it's important, because this is why it was similar to my last district. There is a pattern, as you all know, declining enrollment in this school district, as there is in most of the state, in, in this part of the state. It was true in my last district too. This is responsible government on, 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 from my, from my perspective. And, and getting back to the adults that may have a problem with it, in my experience, convincing them is usually very difficult, if that's how they feel. And, and so I think it's important to explain to them your rationale, but then not spend months and months or years debating and discussing it, because what really, really gets to people in my experience is uncertainty. People want to know what's happening. And even if they don't like the decision, they want to know what the decision is going to be. And I referenced that early with, with the Realtors. And so with the timeline that's already out there, I, I think it is time for the Board of Education and the voters ultimately to either step up and make this decision, or to say, we're not going to do it. And, and then have that certainty and live with, live with the outcome.
And Doug, thanks very much for your comments on that. And our discussion certainly won't be the last on the topic.
I would imagine not.
Let, let me move over and ask Melissa to, to share a little bit about her background and, and some of the things she's been thinking about.
My name's Melissa Cowell. I've been on the board now for three and a half years. In fact, this November, I will be up for reelection for another four-year term. They may not want me, they may. So we'll see. That's, the jury's still out. But just, you know, I, I like what you had to say about the Lyman School issue, because the, the biggest thing to remember here is children are highly adaptable. It's the parents that are highly emotional. And in all important decisions, you need to remove emotion from those decisions. And you need to do what's right. And I, I bring that to this board or that, that way of thinking to this board, because I am the third generation owner of our family farm in Woodstock. I live in Middlefield most of the time. Actually, all of the time, this is my primary residence. But I also work for a company called Ly Master Switch in Woodstock. I'm a territorial sales manager for the northeast, eastern Canada, west to Wisconsin, down to Tennessee and, and the Midwest. So I, I sell medical foot pedals for a career. A design and sell. So that's my background, but I also bring quite a bit of what I'd like to thank my parents for, which is Yankee common sense. My father is a retired educator and a farmer. And it gave me a very strong background in a lot of areas that has helped me in life, helps me serve my community, helps me serve on this board. I try to be sensible and remove emotion from any decision and look at the bottom line, look at the dollars and cents. And that being said, the one thing that I would really like to see you and your team work on, because we have been hit with a couple of expenditures last year related to the declining, I want to say, health of a facility. The courts at the Memorial School had fallen into disrepair. And when they asked us for additional funding for that, they told us that, you know, it had real, the, the, the basketball courts had just been essentially neglected. And, and that kind of got my, my, you know, wheel spinning. And I'd really like to see your team work on a comprehensive facilities audit. And it's probably a good time for you to work on that, because if you begin that now, that will help prove the point that Lyman is in disrepair and the amount of money that's necessary to repair it. You can certainly cite what we needed to put into the basketball courts in Memorial School in Middlefield. And you can compare the two there. It, you know, it's a fact, it cost us this much because we, we maintained them as long as we could. And then they reached a point we needed to do them over. So I think that we, we always, number one, want to provide safe environments for learning. This pandemic has taught us, I'm sure, all of us, we can do our jobs from home, our children can learn from home. And it's less about the surroundings, more about the curriculum. And if the curriculum follows the children to another facility, to me, that, that's the most powerful thing. I think kids are highly adaptable and can, they can emotionally move and change schools. Parents will have a hard time with it. So I'm not, I'm, you can obviously tell from my comments that I'm not against closing the school if that is in the best interest of our, our regional school district overall. But I, I just would like you to, you and your team, to put some focus on effectively managing the facilities that we do have, that we do see continuing into the future. And watching those things closely, because it does seem like as soon as we get off of one bonding issue, something else comes up and we're hit up for more money to bond. And I feel like if we pay attention to our facilities and to our buildings, you know, to our equipment, to our air conditioning, to our heating, cooling, all of that, we can head off some of the major repairs down the line. And certainly, like everything else, if we bring our car to the dealer, the dealer's going to tell us, gosh, it's four years old, you should get a new one. Well, we've maintained it, we've taken good care of it, and we can probably drive it for 10 more years. But there are people who, no matter what, will trade their car in after two years or four years, because they think they need to. And that's where my background of Yankee farmer comes in. You know, I still make hay and, and do things on my farm with tractors that are older than I am. So I believe in, in strong preventive maintenance programs. I think that our school district in the past has not had a focus on that. I, I, and I'm not saying take the focus by any means off of our curriculum or our students or, you know, the bigger picture. But I would like to see a committee pay a little bit closer attention to the jewels that we already have in our crown before they fall out and we have to buy new ones.
So well, well stated. And again, I can't really comment on the status of the things that you're mentioning. I can tell you that I was part of two exercises, facility audits in my last district. And the challenge became that people did not like, people being the taxpayers, did not like the sticker that came back and said, this is what you ought to be investing. And so I'd love to tell you that, that gave us the, the data we needed to get to where you say, but, but unfortunately, the resources just weren't there. So, but I still think it's a good exercise. And, and again, I don't, I don't know when the last time we did that was here, or if we've ever done it, or, or what that looks like, but I, I don't disagree with you at all.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate you listening. And it's, it's going to be very nice to have you working with us. Great to, great to have this chance to be one-on-one with you. So thanks for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
Why don't we go over to Michael? I'll be all right, Mike?
You just had to unmute my microphone. Doug, it's so nice to, to you again. We've crossed paths in a couple of Chamber of Commerce meetings, but it's our first time really chat, particularly from a Board of Finance standpoint. So I want to welcome you to the community. You're going to love being here. You and I have actually a lot in common. I don't know if you know any of this. So I, I read a little bit about you and I, and I listened to some of the things you said. And so we both spent more than 20 years in Virginia. And I grew up in a small town called Berryville in Clark County, where I attended a school system from first grade through 12th grade, very much like Regional School District 13. I had a graduating class of a little over 100 and received a very good education there. I always felt that it was a good education despite being from sort of a podunk town. And as a result, I'm a big fan of public education and getting a good quality education for our kids. We both, it seems, graduated college in 1990. We were both naval officers. And both of our wives are from Long Island. How's that?
Twins!
And if that's not enough, both of our last names start with an S, have six letters and one vowel.
Oh my God!
I don't know what all that means. But I'd like to think that some of that somehow gives us a head start and a good basis for working together.
It means you did your, you did your homework on me.
Well, I just took notes on some of the things that were said, and there was an article or two that I, that I came across. Like I said, you're going to love it here. It's a wonderful community. It's a wonderful part of the country. I've lived all over the place in about a dozen states. And I've been here since 2015, 2005. And it feels, it, it's a great place to, to be home, great place to call home. And I raised two children that both went through Regional School District 13 from kindergarten through graduating at, at Coggin Chog. So, and one with special needs. So we've experienced the school district, we support the school district, and we recognize the importance of that. Now with that being said, and none of this is going to be news to you, but I just want to share my perspective. And that is we have declining enrollment over time. I would love to see other factors come to play that will reverse that at some point. But for now, that's what we've seen. And even with a flat budget, I understand the gross went down a little bit, but overall, still the school budget is, is up a little bit this year. Even with the flat budget, that comes out to mean a higher cost per student. And we feel that. In Connecticut, our residents pay, we have some of the highest tax burdens when you In Connecticut, our residents pay, we have some of the highest tax burdens when you factor in. All the different ways we pay taxes. Sales tax and property tax and gasoline tax and high energy prices and things like that. And Middlefield is not quite as affluent as Durham. So dollars matter very much. And you're put in, I think, a challenging position. And I wanna, we want to support you. We hope we'll be on the same page with you. Uh and I I'm encouraged to hear you say certain things like being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. Um make sure we're spending money in a smart way. On teachers and programs, having responsible government. Um so those, I think that's a great start to hear some of those things from you. And um but when the school budget comes up to a vote. You'll see the pressure from our voters. And the lower that the budget can be or the less high it can be. Um you'll see less pressure and the higher that budget is, you'll see more pressure. So you have an unenviable um role. You have a challenging position and I take my hat off to you for stepping in. And I wish you um all success and and hope that you can. Balance those priorities because we absolutely want a good, high quality education and program. And you're right, you also said this before, that's not just academic, though academics to me are the most. The the most important part of the the educational program, but there's other aspects and there's um there's sports. And there's um you know, uh mental health program, services for special needs, things like that. So we definitely want, and I don't, I should say I, I don't know that I speak for anyone else here necessarily, but. Um you know, those programs are uh overall the most important part. But right behind it, just just an inch behind it is the financial piece of it. So um I hope you'll you'll recognize those challenges. I'm sure that you do. And um I look forward to um seeing the work that you will do to help. Keep good quality programs in place while stretching every bit of those dollars and cents that um that are available. Because our taxpayers feel it and uh it's important, I think, to most of us. If not all of us in town, to see those dollars used very cost effectively. So we're glad you're here. I look forward to meeting you in person and uh I don't need a response necessarily, but you know, good. Good luck with everything that uh that you're about to embark. We wish you success.
Uh how about over to David?
Well, I don't think I need to reiterate what Mike said. Um I'm actually the longest serving person on this board. Um I think I'm coming up on ten years. Uh so I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen a lot of the, you know, different things. Uh me and my wife have been here for, uh very blessed to be here for thirty years. Um I've raised four wonderful children, two that are already married off. And I have two sixteen year old twins. The boy goes to private high school at Xavier and my daughter Alicia Lowry, don't worry, you'll meet her and uh.
Other than with the iPad.
Yeah, well, yeah, I found out the iPad was because she was doing uh Model UN. Out of uh out of Boston this past weekend, so she had Secretary of State, whatever on there. I couldn't figure out what it was. So um but no, uh you'll you'll meet my daughter Alicia. Um. I've been very happy uh most times with the uh school system. Uh my kids have all gone through the um the independent program, the original Lyman program. Uh the funny part was is that uh if you ever want to discuss the whole history of that stuff, I could lend you some very interesting insights. The, one of the cute parts was is that there were actually more kids from Middlefield going to Brewster to the traditional program. Than they were going to the Lyman program for ID. Um don't laugh, Joel, but it's true. Uh and there were more Durham people coming to Middlefield for the for the uh for Lyman School. There was, there's a lot of strange little quirks to it. Um my subject is uh that I wanted to bring to you is that this area. Has a lot of specialty manufacturing and a lot of things that um. Are very close to the school system. And I think that maybe because we have this declining enrollment. It could serve, you know, make lemons, you know, when you got lemons, make lemonade. I think that right now there's a lot of pressure from the state having to do with diversity of our system. Uh you'll hear it. Uh and there's, you know, there's, there's um people out there clamoring to have more diversity. Uh I think that with the overhead that we have. We may be able to put together at the high school level at least, some type of a specialty school. Uh other school systems with declining enrollment in Connecticut have actually done it. Uh they've done agribusiness. Um and actually built wings onto their high school, which had brought in kids from other communities. Uh the Chapag High School out in western Connecticut, which is a beautiful area. But they just have no school population whatsoever left. It's an idea. Uh and it could serve the purpose of possibly getting more diversity in the school. But it would also serve the purpose of bringing um new talent. Something that, something that makes people want to be in District thirteen at the high school level because it's got. That little asterisk, that special um something. And there's a lot of high tech manufacturing around here. Uh be it lasers or um the uh the air, you know, the air industry with airfoil. Uh switching, a lot of, there's a lot of real interesting things being made in Connecticut still. And a lot of these companies can't even find employees for their open jobs right now. They're having a real tough time finding even employees. So there are are opportunities even in this economy. Of, you know, when you say learner based, I look at learning as something you're gonna do for your whole, your whole life. Usually I have a massive bookcase sitting behind me because I always read and I'm a constant reader of of everything. And you can't learn enough, but if learning goes into your occupation, that's even better. And I think that uh you coming along at this time may offer you a real opportunity. To do something very special. Um my overall background is I am a thirty-five year teamster. Uh my wife is a director of auditing. So she keeps me on my toes. Uh my wife also uh is on the citizens finance board. She'll get to meet her there too. But I've always been a very hands-on person in my community. I think that uh it's part of being in middle. Field is you have to play a role and you have to be a part. And uh for twenty some odd years, I've served my town. And I wish you very well and I hope that you get at least twenty some odd years. I'm serving us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good suggestions. I appreciate it.
And I love the area you come. I've been down that Shenandoah Valley plenty.
Yes, it it is beautiful and it's beautiful here too. So um I've been very blessed.
And it's even prettier. Well, I don't know. It's even, I was gonna say it's even prettier without the white, but. But but I could be um, I could be criticized for saying that, I suppose. Um how about Joel? Would you like to uh give you a little bit of your background and some thoughts?
Sure. Uh so uh thank you, Doug, for coming out here uh tonight. But I also want to thank my fellow board members and uh particularly, you know, uh. Our leadership too, Jim is is great and Ed and Al. Um are really uh great to work with. And uh so I think, speaking for all of us, we kind of feel like we're a big team. Um and it's cool to be on this team.
Yes.
Uh so um. So I'm in the same game that you're in. I I'm a long term time educator. I teach uh advanced placement economics at Farmington High School. And my wife is a high school math teacher. Uh we have two children in the district. Um and like what you've heard from other people here, uh pleased overall with uh. The district's uh educational system. So um you know, there's always things you you want to see. Uh change or or done better, but overall been very positive experience for us. So we like the schools here. And um I'm also uh the debate coach for RSD thirteen. I was, I coached debate at Farmington High for about eight or nine years and my daughters were getting older. And so I wanted to bring debate uh here. So I coached the middle school and the high school teams. And that is really fun uh and exciting. Uh so we'll have, we have uh, we just had a high school tournament this past Saturday and we'll have a middle school tournament. Uh this coming, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. It's it's awesome uh because it's statewide. So um that's exciting. So our our kids get to debate against kids from all across the state. And sometimes New York and New Jersey as well. So that's cool. Uh so and my my wife is involved in the community too. She uh runs the ski club. For the schools, which is exciting. So we're connected to Powder Ridge in that in that way. And that's been really awesome too uh for the most part. And uh she's a math tutor for lots of kids, including our own kids. Um so she's she's familiar with the math curriculum here in in town. Uh kind of all the way through high school. So so we were connected and we're happy to be here um also. So I just, you know, I'm in the business, so I'm gonna ask you just a couple of questions. About organizational governance and change. And so. You know, yeah, you're you're now at a leadership position, but you might have to move organizations, schools or departments. Uh in different ways. And and you know, Dave was talking about Chapag. Which I think is really interesting because Chapag is kind of a success story. Uh in in terms of schools having declining enrollment and re- sort of reinventing themselves. So how do you help? And that and that's a big step and one we might want to take, but how do you help like? Uh any organization changes culture or reinvents itself? And I'm I'm curious to hear how you respond to that.
So hearing that question, I feel like I'm um back in the interview process for this job. Uh the first interview was two hours and the second was four and a half hours and and they still hired me after that, which is amazing. Uh but so let me just say this, um I cannot, you know. With a crystal ball, say exactly how we'll do anything here. Right now I'm in a transition phase where I'm just doing things like this and trying to meet people. But but I am a big believer in strategic planning. I have a background in that. I actually did that for two districts ago, a district of like thirty thousand kids. Um and as superintendent, I I feel like we took that to the next level in our past district. And as a result of that. We did three major restructures or reorganizations of that district. Um not for the sake of change and not because it was so much a people thing. It was to say, we as a community, we as a school district. Have said we are committed to certain transformational practices and yet we have an organization that's still organized around more traditional practices. I uh without getting into, you know, too much time here, I will tell you. That um I am an advocate for a national movement called learner centered education. Other people call it different things, but uh and I was able to do quite a bit of that work in my last district. And in addition to that, through a a national organization called Education Reimagined that I'm very active in. Um and and also through the the National Superintendent's Association. I have visited quite a few transformative learning environments across this country. And I have thought partners all across the country. And 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 that's not to say that anything I've seen. We would exactly do here because this is a different community and I have to do this collaboratively with with the community. But but I I I guess what I would say is at its core, and you're a veteran educator, so you can either agree or disagree with me. And then we can, you're a debater, so you know, maybe we can even mix it up at some point on this. The um the educational systems that most of us went through and that most of us operate currently. Uh are rooted in more than a hundred years ago at an industrial age model that was really preparing kids for assembly line jobs. And that is not the current workforce that that children are now entering into. Yet institutionally, we're very loathe to change. And and so um. It does begin with a culture change, I believe, um because this is. The transformation of schools, I have learned. Um is not something that can be mandated by a board of education or a superintendent or a principal. Um it really requires buy-in from all stakeholders. Um and and two that I'll mention, that I think um I cannot do this work without. One would be the young learners themselves who we serve. And so um kind of a non-negotiable for me is that they be front and center in um the co-design work. That we do in transformation. This is what I've seen modeled in other places and I've even done that in my previous district. Um and that's hard for some people. Some people view them as less than. Um that's why they call them students. I call them learners because to an earlier point, we're all learners. And and if you actually listen to them, because they're actually going through school, they will tell you. What the current school experience is, and that's not always easy to hear as a as a lifetime educator. But the other group are the teachers themselves. Um and every environment that I have seen that has been transformed fundamentally. That co-creation also occurs with within the teacher ranks. Um and and without teachers that buy into the vision, it doesn't go anywhere. And and so um that's where I'd like to be because that's where I've been and that's the only way I know how to lead. And and so sometimes uh those transformations take a little bit longer to get off the ground. Because you're spending, I I think, important work in the very early stages, building relationships. And uh and again, I can't judge this organization and I've only been here for a month. But but stereotypically, what we have to kind of beat down are traditional hierarchies. That says that only a principal can do X and only a teacher can do X and only a counselor can do X. And these transformative environments that I've seen, what the children see. Are a bunch of adults that care about them and aren't so wrapped up into their titles. Um or their individual responsibilities. And that's a really cool thing. Um to put into practice and and to see in practice. And and so that um. That's one of the reasons I want people to call me by my first name. It's one of the reasons why I'm not wearing suits and ties everywhere. Like I I used to earlier in in my career. Um we're all learners and we can all learn from each other. And um if any of the transformations um are going to occur, whether they're, you know. Kind of um the specialty school or or things of that of that nature. Um they happen because people believe in that common vision. And they're not afraid of doing things differently if those things are ultimately better for for children. Um and and so um I guess going back to where we started with the whole Lyman closure. It's things like that that I believe are gonna be barriers to doing any of the work that I just described. Because some people aren't gonna want to talk about that work until we get some of these big hurdles out in front of us. And and you know, again, not a promise, but hopefully music to this group's ears. Um that work in my experience doesn't cost anymore. I'm not saying it's a big savings either, um but it really takes um educators. And and other support staff in the organization being willing to. Do a job slightly differently. Um and and again, without just taking this too far out. I, I will say in the very simplest terms, um, the role of the teacher changes from kind of the content expert. I'm a former AP physics teacher, so we have that AP thing in common. Um, it, from the content expert and, and the, um, instructor, the professor, the one that's imparting knowledge to the children to more the coach or the facilitator of the learning that is initiated and owned by the learner themselves. And again, when you see that transformation happen, um, kids are more excited to come to school. They feel like they have more of a stake in driving their own learning. Um, but administrators and teachers and superintendents and boards have to give up some of their power for that to happen. And that doesn't just change overnight. So, so I'm not naive to that, but that's the, you probably, sorry you asked me this question Joel, but that's, that's my answer. That's kind of the answer that I gave to the board over six and a half hours and they still hired me. So hopefully that makes you feel better at this point about me being here or you are scared to death and, and actively to move me on. So.
Yeah.
I'll stop there.
No Doug, I, I'm not scared, man. Not scared at all. Uh, so welcome aboard. Um, I was born in Western Pennsylvania. I was born in Bradford, PA. I don't know if you know where that is. Uh, my wife's from, uh, around Buffalo, so.
Heard of it. I grew up in the South Hills. My dad worked for US Steel, so we lived in Pittsburgh most of my life growing up.
Okay, okay. But no, I, I welcome your comments and I think, uh, I think it's awesome actually. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Um, so let me, uh, complete the circle for the Board of Finance. Um, my background Doug is that I have, well, I've got a technical and business background, retired from United Technologies, uh, six years ago now. Uh, and have been enjoying that retirement, uh, here in Middlefield, uh, very much and have been a member of the Board of Finance, um, as long as David, maybe? Pretty close.
We're close.
Yeah. Um, so have had an opportunity to see, uh, a lot of the dynamics, uh, over those 10 years. Um, the, the one thing that I would, um, look a little bit more, people talked about overlap. The best I can do on Virginia overlap is that I paid tuition to Virginia Tech for a lot of, for my sons. Um, and tried to take the 11-hour drive down and back to watch football games. That was a lot of, that was goodness. Um, and there's some overlap in terms of, uh, background with regard to one of the things you're looking at, uh, as part of the transformative activity is strategic planning. I started my postgraduate career as a strategic planner for General Electric. So I listened to some of your, uh, discussion at the, uh, board retreat and, uh, was familiar with the language. Anyway, I, you know, David talked, and a number of people have talked not only about cost control, but about opportunities for enrichment and for, uh, raising the attractiveness of our school system. And doing that, I mean, it, it's pretty clear that you're excited and you've given us some excitement about the, the opportunity for a transformative impetus in the school district. Uh, that's, that's really very, very, um, energizing. I would tell you, uh, you know, the one thing that I wanted to share, Dave mentioned that his wife is a member of the Board of Ed Finance Committee, as am I. And I think that, you know, we haven't been as engaged as the credentials of that committee would actually, uh, be able to empower. There are some pretty strong folks and on the committee and from the community to this point, we've largely been offering input in terms of the issues and the challenges faced by the communities, both Middlefield and Durham. I think that as we move toward change, that'll be my word for transformation, but as we move toward change and the evaluation of those changes, I think that on the, uh, numbers side, the finance committee can help Kim to evaluate some of the opportunities that are presented to her. Uh, both in terms of looking over additional gathering of information, perhaps vetting the information. And at the end of the day, helping sell decisions that have financial implication to the communities based on a greater involvement. So that's one of the areas I believe, uh, we can, and I'll be talking with Bob about, uh, our committee doing more and Christine to, to do more because there is a, there's a good resource there that can be empowered to raise the capabilities, uh, and augment what Kim does. An excellent job and her, her staff do an excellent job for you as, uh, as we believe right now. So with that, uh, that's pretty much we've gone around. Let me ask, uh, Ed or Al if they have any comments?
Yeah, I just, uh, hi Doug and, um, hello everyone this evening. Um, unfortunately, um, I'm the only member of the Board of Selectmen here tonight. Bobby Armartino, uh, he's, uh, actually was on vacation this week and, um, he did not want to spend another night away from, uh, his wife. Uh, because you know, he said, I think he's had three meetings this week with the, uh, with the school, you know, between, um, committees and, um, last night's board meeting. So he sends his apologies and he's also, um, has, has had a quite, quite a good opportunity to, to, um, interact with Doug, um, so far. So, uh, and, um, uh, our third select woman, um, uh, sent her apologies. She was just a little bit under the weather and, uh, didn't feel up to joining us tonight. So, um, but perhaps, um, uh, when, uh, when, uh, when, when you have some time in the future Doug, perhaps you can, you can join us sort of Board of Selectmen meeting briefly and, and we, just to, uh, particularly to meet our third, uh, uh, third member of our Board of Selectmen. I, I've heard a lot of comments tonight. I think, um, Doug has heard, uh, perhaps tidbits of that, snippets of that from me. Uh, because I was trying to prepare him for, uh, you know, what, uh, what, what, uh, what the, the issues are, what the concerns are in our community, particularly here in Middlefield and, and so on. So, um, I, I think, um, all of, all of your, uh, uh, every one of your, um, questions and thoughts tonight from the Board of Finance, from all the members, I think we're very, very much on, on point. And, um, Doug is soaking up a lot of stuff here. So. But anyway, uh, the hour's getting late, so, um, I'm going to, um, uh, thank you, thank, uh, uh, Jim for the opportunity of putting this together. I, I think it was a good, um, a good meeting for, for Doug to see, um, see all of our, um, our two most important, uh, influential, uh, boards in town, elected boards, which is the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So, um, anyway, I, I don't know if, um, Al, if you have anything to say, uh, Ed?
Well, I think, um, you know, it was interesting getting, uh, all the input from the folks and uh, just for Doug, I mean, I've been the finance director for four and a half years. I probably started around the same time as Kim, I'm guessing. Um, I've been a CPA for 41 years. I've been the auditor for Middlefield for about eight years prior to becoming the finance director. And I do my best to, to, you know, I don't live in Middlefield or Durham. I do my best to, to stretch every dollar I possibly can. For the, for the town and, um, and I work pretty well with, with both Kim and, and Beth in, in Durham. Um, we periodically share information and if there's anything you ever need from the town of Middlefield from a financial perspective, feel free to give me a call.
Yeah, I'd like to add that the, uh, relationships between, uh, uh, the towns are, let's say are, uh, the executive branch of our town, uh, myself and, and Al with the school district is excellent. And I, I believe that's the same in Durham. And, um, I, I think it's, uh, grown stronger over the years.
Well, I'll do everything I can to not mess that up.
So, so Doug, in conclusion, we're, we're very grateful for the considerable amount of time you've shared with us, given the fact that we, we have a little bit of idea of what your schedule has been demanding and will continue to demand in the future. So, so thank you for doing that. You've given us, uh, a great window into your personality and, and your value system and, and the things that you are believing and anchoring some of the future directions on. So thank you very much for that. You've shown us that you're a good listener and that's an important aspect to all of us as well. So thank you. Um, we have been fortunate to have a good dialogue with past, uh, with, with the, between the towns as Ed just mentioned, between the towns and the school district and superintendent, and we look forward to that continuing. This is a great start for us and we'll do everything we can to help support your transformational efforts.
Thank you. And this, this has been great for me too. I've taken a lot of notes here and, uh, looking forward to working with you all going forward.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. So procedurally, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And, uh, so thank you very much.